Yeah.
All right. Thank you all for hanging in there. Next time we'll, we'll schedule the budget committee meeting with a shorter duration between meetings.
We're just so effective.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and bring our city council work session to order. This is Monday, May 12th, 2025. This is our council work session. We normally have it at six o'clock, but because of the budget committee meeting, we had, we're having it tonight at seven. And I've left that. So that's on. They can hear us and it's recording. So we're good there. I'm just going to go ahead and I'm going to dive right into the agenda. And I know it's fairly lengthy, but I think so it'll be, it'll take very long to discuss. So the first thing up on the agenda, and this is under the review of previous work session action items. We have the charter spectrum franchise agreement. And I can tell everyone that the attorney is finalizing that. So they asked for some feedback. I had some questions and they've answered the questions. So I've asked for, okay, well, when can we have, show this to council? So I'm hoping for our council meeting on May 27th. That I'll have something to share with you guys. So, so hopefully very soon, hopefully. Let's see. The next item here is engineer of record for planning projects. So we hit a small snag with that. So Chuck Schultz, he was great and he helped us out with getting branch back onboard. And we needed to have the city attorney sign that agreement. And the city attorney is like, well, quite a lot of time has transpired, expired since, you know, we let that lapse. So she would like us to drop a new agreement. So she's working on that for us.
And that's at the city attorneys.
That's with the city attorney right now. So yeah, that is one, we have about four things going on with her right now. So I'm hopefully, I'm hoping we'll have something for a city council meeting at the end of the month on that. Next item is the city hall assessment. I have it down here as a second opinion. So once we get our engineer of record, then we will go to the engineer of record and we'll ask them if they can go ahead and come out and give us a second opinion on the city hall building. So that's the, the plan at this point in time, but we have, we have to wait a little bit till we get the paperwork sorted out for the agreement with the engineer. So stand by on that. Next item I have on here is the council field trip to the Springs properties. It sounded like everybody was very excited about that. Something about a road trip or something.
And it might not hurt, even though it says Springs properties, just to look at all the properties in question, just so that those that weren't with us last time have a good idea of what we're talking about.
Good call.
Yeah, my, I had, my kid came with me and we.
We all piled into the Honda. It was great.
Oh, yeah, that's.
The Odyssey, right?
Yeah, in the van. Yeah. Yeah. It was, it was a lot of fun.
It was.
And we picked a really nice evening to do it.
It was beautiful.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll sort that out probably a June, July project. I know we talked about on the next item on the agenda, selling city equipment. So it sounds like we all agree. We want to do that and we're not making decisions here tonight, but we have already previously decided that we wanted to go ahead and do that.
The equipment that was in the reader building, right?
Yes. There's a lot of stuff, not just the reader building, but you know, the building came down. So all that stuff had to be stashed somewhere else.
Yeah.
So it's kind of, you know, crammed and nooks and crannies right now, but we're trying to figure out the public notice piece. Cause we can't just, as a government, a local government or any government agency for that matter, you can't just sell your stuff.
Because their assets we purchased with the public funds.
Right.
Yeah. So you have to notify the public that you're doing that.
Got it.
Exactly what we're going to do. So it's on the list of things to do. We're just, we're a little shorthanded right now at city hall. So we'll get there.
I believe we already voted to make it surplus.
Yeah.
I think it's been a while ago, but yeah.
Right. So I think that that part's okay, but we should probably check with the attorney because what if that timeframe thing is an issue again? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, exactly.
So anyway, just thoughts.
Nope. That's, that's a good point. Right to do.
I want to make sure we do it right.
Yes. Okay. Okay. The next item here is the residence at 180 North Eighth Street. So this is with the attorney as well, because I don't even have a clue where you even start with that. I mean, right now it's in a certain party's name. That party has been deceased for quite some time.
Yeah.
And it actually changed hands a couple more times and all those parties are deceased as well. So I have no earthly clue where even to begin. So I said, Lori, here.
Down at this in the town somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, it had one away. Okay.
Yeah, it's been, we occasionally get folks that'll call in as they'll see.
Activity.
Activity there. Yeah. So. So we'll keep you guys included on that one. Once we hear from the attorney on that as well. And this is another item. The next item on the agenda, IT services agreement with our, with Davey, IT guy. Fondly call him. I've asked Lori if she can put together a real simple service, IT service agreement.
Awesome.
So just to cover the Oback side in case something happens.
Good to have it formalized.
Yes, of course. So she's working on that. We have a lot of things with her, but I don't know how to do any of this, this stuff. And I don't think most of us do. So.
And I don't think we should even try to do that stuff, the legally binding stuff.
No, I, no. Okay. So next item here is the criminal justice information services training. I mentioned this couple of meetings ago. So it is part of, I mean, currently it's part of Dawn's job to do court. And that's a training because that's a specific training on handling those records. And you have, you can't be handling those records or looking at those records or anything unless you have this training. And right now Dawn has a real basic level training. I think we need to bump hers up. And whoever we end up hiring for the administrative assistant, we should train them too.
Yep.
Because you know, I've been saying about having buddies.
Yeah. And especially if they're also going to be the court clerk role or whatever. I don't know if it's Dawn's role or the city.
Currently it's Dawn's. So I don't know actually whose it will be when it, when we have an administrative assistant.
Because the admin assistant will also have city recorder duties and those might kind of dovetail.
Dawn's the only one that has the training.
Oh, got it.
If we give this training to the, the new admin assistant, it should be covered.
Yeah, absolutely.
It would offload some duties from Dawn.
Everybody should, there should be two people on everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Training, all of it.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to get Dawn trained up. And then when we bring somebody else on, get them done as well.
In case Dawn wins lottery and doesn't come back.
Right. We have been burned too many times. So, okay. So we'll, we'll get all that. I'm thinking city of Harrisburg will be a really good resource for this training. So, and I think Dawn actually mentioned that that's where she went to get her initial training.
Oh, good.
So that's, we'll go back to them when we're ready. Next up is our special counsel water and wastewater meeting, which it's all a blur. I know it's scheduled. It's the 19th, I believe. Make sure I put it in my phone. So I know. So it's, it's not in my phone, but I'll make sure to put it in my phone. So in that meeting, we're expecting Chuck Schultz to be there. Mark will be there. Just about all of us are going to be there.
I might be able to adjust some things around to be there. So.
If you could, that'd be great. If not, I completely understand. I'm like, I had my little chart and I'm trying to figure out, okay. Okay. No, no, no. Okay. Everybody, oh, okay. So, so if you can, that'd be great. I think that would be, that would be great. That's a very important meeting. It sounds like we'll have the public works committee members are invited.
Yeah, I was just going to invite all of the public works committee because we haven't been able to have a meeting. There's been so much going on with the water plant. So I'm just going to go ahead and invite the committee to come to that as one of our meetings so that they get informed on what's going on and why things aren't kind of, they don't feel like things are moving forward because we haven't been meeting. They'll get to see why and start getting that information because it'll be part of our ongoing meetings anyway. So I've decided that that might be a really good idea. And then we're also not dominating Chuck and Mark's time more to try to have another meeting when we're already meeting, meeting, meeting right now. Yeah.
Right. I know there's a lot.
Yep.
So we'll try to, we'll try to, I'm trying to, you know, piggyback things the best I can. So we're not monopolizing your guys' time all the time. Okay. So then this is Dawn talked to us the last couple of city council meetings on the next item on the agenda, which is the setting up the, the utility billing due date and adjusting that.
Oh, yeah.
Cause right now at city hall, so many things are happening the same week. And she's been looking at where utility due dates fall in other cities. And it could be adjusted, but we do need to have a public meeting, a public, well, it's more of a public meeting or a town hall kind of meeting. And get, you know, the citizens input on that. So I haven't scheduled anything yet. I've got plenty of other things to schedule too, but we'll get that scheduled. So we'll have lots of notice. We'll make sure it's on social media and everything. So probably with the bills, the water bills is too, as well too. More to come on that one. Council vacancy. We do have one application.
Oh, excellent.
We might have a second one.
Wow.
We might, we'll see. We'll have to see. So stay tuned on that. Okay. Any other, any questions regarding the, that was basically a really quick run through of previous work session action items.
That was very impressive. Very quick.
Yeah. Well done.
Like it.
Very concise.
So we're going to go ahead and go into new discussion if you guys are ready.
Yep.
Okay. So Dawn and I, this is the first item under new discussion. We're interviewing two temporary, two temps for the administrative assistant position tomorrow. So I don't want Dawn, I have, I have, I don't want Dawn to be the only one in the office. Even the public works guys, they're off, they're doing their thing.
Yeah.
But I, this is something, we got to get somebody else in.
Buddy system.
With her. Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I want, you know, it's a buddy system thing. It's a safety thing. Having someone there so you can have a break thing.
Yeah.
You know, it's really important that we get somebody. So we're going to, we're going to interview a couple of people. We'll use the same questions we used when we were doing interviews the last time around.
And it, is this through a temp agency as well?
Yes, it's through select temps.
Okay, got it.
Yep. So there's that. I'll save, I'll save your personnel updates for.
Sure. I can, I can just.
Well, you want to do it now?
It'll be really quick. Yeah. The mayor and I are working on the PDs for the admin assistant and the city administrator, the regular positions, not a temp for either of those. And we're pretty darn close to having it finalized and we'll be ready to, I guess, what's the next step? Do we want to share it with everybody or do we post it?
We should probably share it with everybody.
Okay. And, and what we decided was we're going to roll the city recorder role into the city admin is what we had determined before. So it'll be, that'll be a full-time position, benefits eligible. And then the city assistant, the administrative assistant. Yeah. And then the city administrator will be 32 hours a week and also benefits eligible. Okay. But not a full-time role, but it's also not going to be doing city recording, city planning, or any utilities work. It'll just be supervising utilities workers. So they will not be working at the wastewater train or plant.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So this, the temp admin assistant is really just to get us through until we've got a regular position.
And actually I, as an FYI, Misty is interested in the full-time permanent administrative assistant position. So.
Yeah, that's great.
Misty was the individual that worked for us before Gobby.
And left for, yeah, it would be great to have her back. If she's, she'll have us back.
Definitely. So yeah. So we will definitely encourage her to apply.
Definitely.
Have as much training then.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's the, the bonus there.
Big bonus.
Yep. Okay. Um, okay. So I've been helping out with planning commission and getting their agendas and getting their meetings squared away too. And we've been talking about land, land use fees and how Monroe really hasn't been charging for fees. And we need to be able, the city needs to be able to cover those expenses. In the past, they haven't been covered. They just, the money's come out of the coffer, if you will. And we really need to have the developers cover those costs. So we're going to have a work session with the planning commission on land use fees. We've got examples from Harrisburg. Philomath too. Yeah. So, so we'll discuss those. So that's, that's going to be probably sometime this month. So that's coming up. Okay. This, the next item here, this is a project that I've been wanting to do for a while. We actually had some money that someone had donated to the city for it. Dawn had told me that that money is, it's not there anymore. So after a couple of years, if the money sits in a fund, then it gets rolled up into the bigger fund and gets used for something else. So this is the Baker district signage and the donations. So if we go ahead and get new donations and we act a little faster, I've talked to Mark and all he needs for the district, which is going to be the, the sign, the signage, we can have a logo on there. And my thought was, was to have the Baker house on it.
Yeah.
And then have the street name on there. And Marcus told me the county does our signage, our street signage. And it's like $30 a sign or something.
Yeah, it's not bad. And they even sent us some examples. It's really nice work.
Yeah, it is. So I was going to do, so Mark was like, well, figure out what your logo is going to be for the sign. And then figure out how many signs are, and then, then we'll need to raise that money for the signs. And then.
Remind us the area of the Baker district. Is it two blocks by two blocks?
It is, it goes Orchard. So it's Orchard and so Orchard is on the west side, then Sixth Street on, on the. Hold on a second. I'm trying to visualize.
Orchard is east west.
Yeah. So that's right. Okay. So it's Orchard and then it's Sixth and then it's Main and then it's Seventh, if I remember correctly.
So two blocks by one block.
Yeah, I think so.
Got it.
I'll have to double check the, we passed a resolution on that. So I'll go back and double check it.
Okay.
But.
Thank you.
Well, and this is, and if you guys aren't familiar, so Tony Baker was a counselor and he passed away. And wanted to honor him and his family and what they've done for us in our community. So we.
Would be a great way to do that.
And they have that beautiful house. Make that the cornerstone of the historic district.
Yeah.
That it's just by name. That's all it is. There's no taxation or anything like that. With it, it's just by name. So anyway, so I wanted to share that. And if we can get the, figure out how many signs we need.
Yeah.
And get the donations.
Four, five, six. So probably six signs, right? If it's one block by two blocks, you'd have six intersections with street signs. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah.
I think. So six times 30, $180.
Yeah.
Less labor to put them up.
I might talk to Mark about, there isn't a a street, there's not a signpost right in front of the house there.
Oh, okay.
You know, maybe getting donations for that too.
Yeah.
And doing one there. So again, I will talk to Mark and, you know, in his spare time.
Yeah.
You know, but yeah, if we get donations for all of that.
That'd be cool to have that up.
Yeah. Cause it was also something that I had. When my mother-in-law was mayor, she wanted to do a walking tour. And my thought was to have the Baker house be the beginning of that walking part.
Yeah.
Or walking tour, excuse me.
It's a nice place to start.
Yeah. So. Thoughts. So throwing that out there. Yeah. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Gerard property vacation. So we got a letter at city hall. Last week or the week before, they all kind of blended together. Anyway, there was a, I remember this because I was on planning commission in 2018. And planning commission passed vacating part of, it's called Porvala Street. So it's, it's basically a right of way, if nothing else, that's behind Amquabe and Bennys. There's actually, that's actually Porvala Street. So the Gerards asked for the peace between Bennys and their property, which they have the property between Bennys and the river. If the city, we vacate that and what happens when they vacate it is they split that property in half, half goes to the Gerards. The other half went to Bennys, if I remember correctly. So that's, that's what happened. Planning commission approved it. The thing with the letter was the city administrator at the time, he did not report it. And then the Gerards came back and our previous city administrator was contacted and he did not report it either. So I have, that is with the attorney as well, as I'm like, I don't know what to do with this.
I mean, do we have it audio recorded? Like, is there any proof that that happens?
Yeah. I mean, there's paper proof.
Oh, paper proof. Okay.
There's proof.
Okay.
I mean, by recorder, just not recorded with the county or.
Recorded with the county. Right, right. Sorry. I should have said that.
Speeding and whatnot.
Right. So we just need to make sure that there's no like statute of limitations on it because the timeframe and all that, if we have to revote and then just make sure it gets done.
Right. So that was interesting. That was very educational. And that was like, whoa, that goes back a little bit. So yes, we definitely need to get that squared away. That was not a good thing. So we need to get it fixed. So yeah. Just so you guys know, some of the interesting stuff. Okay. So in the packet, there isn't much in the packet, but there is the next item on the agenda, which is not the flyer. It's the next item.
Next, next item. Oh, boy.
Utility bill. It has a balance of $4,738.28. This was a commercial water account that has been passed due for well over a year. I think it was shut off well over a year ago. This individual has, as far as we can tell, they haven't made any sort of rate payment arrangements. They keep asking if we'll just forget about it. I'm, I really have a hard time forgetting $4,700.
Yeah.
I actually have a meeting with this individual later this week.
I'm sorry.
Well, I am too, but you know, it's fine. I, I'm perfectly fine talking about it. I mean, there, there are a couple of options available.
Yeah.
But I need to see some sort of, as you know, representing the city, some sort of movement on this. Because if there is no movement on this, the city is well within their rights to put a lien on the property. So I hate to say that, but this is a lot of money for Monroe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I got a question on this. So is this bill like over several months accumulated? Okay. How did we get to that point? I guess.
If you look on the back of it, I think it has a little more of an accounting.
Of history.
Does that help you?
Yes.
I think that's what that is.
Okay. So from 2020.
Some, some of them are paid, some of them are not, it looks like.
But at some point in 2024, the account was closed, I think for, on the city side, because it had gotten to the point where it was just no payments were being made and interest was, was accruing. And we weren't getting any sort of response.
Yeah, I only see three payments over those 2020 that.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure.
So this individual has been given a deadline of June 6th to pick an option and follow through. And if they don't pick one of the options, then I will be going to the attorney and asking to put a lien on behalf of the city so that we can, maybe someday the city can recoup this. I don't know what else to do with it, you know?
Is it the building that's on 99?
It is, yes.
I thought that sold.
No, it was, it was on, it was for sale and then pulled off the market. It's the vacant storefront, has apartment upstairs.
Okay.
Historic building.
Yeah. It's next to the museum.
Christmas thing.
Not far from it. Yeah, right across the street.
So yeah. So I will let you guys know how are my meeting with this individual goes.
We'll go from there.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Let's see. I do have one item that I wanted to add that came up, actually came up through social media. So someone has requested, it's the American Legion Troy County's Post 61. So it's primarily based over in Junction City. They would like to use this building once a month for their meetings. So they asked me if I could just make a decision and I said, well, no, I have to, I have to come to the council and ask. So I didn't see an issue with once a month having a meeting here. They do want to also have events and fundraisers here. So I didn't know how we wanted to handle that if we wanted to go ahead and, because we normally charge for those things. But I, I'm just putting it out there.
I think that we should treat them the way anybody, any other group or individual in the community would want to use this. So I think that they should also pay the same rental fee that anybody else would. Otherwise it looks like favoritism.
Right.
Right. And, and also make sure that they have the proper insurance and stuff, just in case there's an issue. We've just run into so many problems. We have to just keep it across the board, the same for everybody.
Yeah, just.
But that would be awesome if they want to use it. That's exciting. I'm glad to hear that people are wanting to use the facilities. That's wonderful.
Definitely.
And we also need to make sure that our paperwork is good on that and that that got followed through on properly and that we have a checklist for them and.
Oh, yeah.
Here's cleaning supplies or extra TP or whatever you might need and.
Yeah.
Please leave it the way you found it. Check in, check out kind of thing.
Yep. Did our fee schedule get finalized?
For.
For just rentals and like.
I mean, it's, it's been finalized for here in MCC. The park is another matter, but I know.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Well, at least the space.
We need to talk about. So, but yeah, it's fine. We will get.
It was discussed. If it was finalized, we don't know, but we'll look back and get that figured out.
Yeah. We'll work on that.
We got it.
All right. I'm trying to think if there's anything else I am forgetting.
It must just getting shorter. Somewhat. It seems a little easier maybe.
No, it's, I don't, I don't even have the website on here. That's crazy. Yeah, that's on here too.
Well, it's fine. We can't, we can't tap a hyperlink and take it, take us to the website. That'd be.
We'll show you guys. Yeah.
You're, you're great.
Um, for the May 27th council meeting, I will add the Troy County's American Legion Post 61 to the agenda. I'm hoping we'll have that franchise agreement, the draft final-ish version of it from Charter Spectrum. And Dawn's accounting and so forth of other things that she's been doing. She came across another resolution that needs to be reversed. And this is resolution 2025 dash 06. So we need to reverse that. We'll have the resolution for the supplemental budget, which we talked about earlier this evening. So we'll have that as well. See, I feel like I'm missing something else here. Hopefully some other things will pop into, then I can share with you guys as well. So, I mean, that's not a definitive list by any shape of the imagination. So beyond that, we have a finance and personnel committee meeting on the 14th of this week. There is a flyer in our packet. The other thing for the library event on Saturday, I was invited. I'm supposed to say some things. I don't know what. We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out.
You could read the piece that you wrote or that you read.
Yeah, at council.
That was nice. Yeah.
Yeah, could do that. So, yeah. So there, and everybody's invited to this if you want to go. Um, let's see what else. I've got the Monroe Oktoberfest, October fourth. And we have the First Responders Appreciation Day, which is also October fourth. Those two events will overlap. What else am I missing, guys?
What's the walk rate down?
Oh, it's supposed to be in August. I just don't know the exact date yet. Torin's supposed to tell me about that.
Oh, fun.
We're going to attempt a farmer's market again.
Oh, there you go.
Are we? How fun. That's awesome.
It'll be at the same place, but we'll see if we get any vendors or anybody shows up. But we are going to try on a Saturday this year. See if that makes any difference.
I bet it will. People passing through on their way to.
I hope so. It's just hard to get vendors because they're going to the bigger, the bigger ones and whatnot. So, but well, we're just, throwing it against the wall and seeing what sticks and we'll see if we can make it work or not. And we're actually just, even though it's farmer's market, we're kind of, trying to switch it to market so that artists, makers, whatever, will feel free to join. And there's going to be, you can do, you can sign up for the season or you can just do a pop-up as well. We've made another thing, as long as you've got your insurance and everything together, that you could just come and it'll be a lesser fee to just pop up for one day or whatever, so that you can do it when it's convenient, because we know a lot of people are busy during the summer and whatnot. So.
The flexibility is nice. That's cool.
So we'll see.
All right.
I got some really good canned goods there last year. Really, really good. Like, yeah, I'm coming back for that.
Yeah.
I'm excited. I'll be able to go more on a Saturday because I'm usually gone on Thursdays. So I'd love to see it.
Yay.
Hopefully it'll work out.
Yeah.
We keep trying.
Thank you for all the hard work you're putting into it and for trying so much. Yeah.
It's great.
You need to go. Okay, mercifully.
Short too.
Yeah. Thirty-one minute long work session.